...of November 10, 2010. We are now on approval of items by consensus. And there is one under the consent agenda tonight. This is Benton.
Requesting approval of the minutes of October 27, 2010, regular session.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to accept, to approve the minutes of October 10, 2010, regular session. Ms. Marchese?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of October 27, 2010, regular session.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mr. Hayes? Thank you. Fellows in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Our next item. Student School Committee. Maybe they're helping, they're going to be Mr. or Mrs. Wilmington High School.
This is the week off.
That's the week off. Give them a chance, we'll see. Exciting things are going on down the corridor. Our next item of business is the superintendent's report. This is Benton.
Thank you. There are four items under the superintendent's report. The first is FY-12 budget development schedule. As you can see from the attachment, we've already started our deliberations of the budget for next year and are planning to do a presentation to the school committee on Saturday, December 4th, at beginning of 8:30. We invite the public to attend. The recommended budget guidelines that we have given out to the staff is continue the current level of services with the understanding the school committee will consider equal-cost substitutions in the recommended budget with all assumptions clearly defined, ensure all legal mandates will be met, ensure professional staffing guidelines will be met, continue to identify and plan alternatives that will provide services in more cost-effective ways, maintain capital assets in order to support the instructional program, and identify ways to reduce the budget if there are not sufficient monies available to fund a level service budget. And I'm happy to say that we will be sharing with you on December, for us, some examples of our reductions in line items, including electricity because of some of our cost-saving efforts. So that's the budget schedule.
Excellent. And we had already told you previously that December 4th, that we do the budget every day, so we hope everybody's able to make it. It's more of a casual morning for us, and you'll be provided with breakfast. So that will be good. And it would be nice to have the public, that would be fine. Okay. Thank you.
Second, John and Abigail Adams Scholarship Recipients. Pleased to announce that 66 members of the senior class have qualified for Adams Scholarships. These are granted annually by the state and are awarded according to a student's 10th grade MCAS scores. Congratulations to the members of the senior class. And I've provided a list that I will put up on the website of the students.
Thank you.
This morning, we were pleased to give out Innovative Teacher Awards. School Business Partnership did a fundraiser golf tournament to raise funds for teacher grants, and there were nine recipients. There were 26 applications, so congratulations to Krista Anderson, Lisa Bellvia, Stacy Benoit, Susan McDonald, Carol Muchler, Lois Nardo, Roxanne Rennie, Jennifer Walker, and the Social Studies Department of the high school for their winning grants. And lastly, I have included a report on this year's Fall Global Child Program provided by Diana Hibner, which is offered in our schools at the kindergarten and elementary grade levels.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or comments? Yes. All right. Thank you, Mrs. Benton. Our next item of business, old business, is our vote on the District School Improvement Plan. Mrs. Benton.
I recommend the approval of the 2010-2011 district-wide school improvement plan that was presented at the October 27 meeting.
Okay. Does anyone? I'll take the motion first, and then we'll have discussion. Could I have a motion to approve the 2010-2011 district-wide school improvement plan? Dr. Quick.
I move to approve the 2010-2011 district-wide school improvement plan.
Do we have a second? Mr. Hayes? Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments on it? We had quite a bit of discussion, I think. We're all set. We thank everybody for all the hard work that they put into the school improvement plan. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain. Mr. Ville, the abstaining. One, two, three, four, five. Five in favor, one abstaining. Mr. Ville. Thank you. Our next item is the vote on the life-threatening allergy policy.
This is the third reading of the life-threatening allergy policy. I recommend approval of the policy. And just to point out, make sure that you understand, it's the two paragraphs on page one of your packet is the policy. We put together the procedures and guidelines, which I am meeting with Dorian Crowe, will meet with Dorian Crowe to finalize after approval of the policy. Gotten a lot of positive feedback from parents.
Oh, excellent.
And the nurses, and help from them on this policy.
All right. Thank you. I'd accept a motion to approve the life-threatening allergy policy. Mr. Hayes?
I'll make a motion to approve the life-threatening allergy policy.
Do we have a second? Mr. Marchese? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Our next item is a vote on procedure for release of executive session minutes.
At the last meeting, it was brought to our attention by Mr. Hayes that we needed to establish a protocol for approval of releasing executive session minutes, and we had suggested that he come up with a protocol that you would approve this evening. So if you could acknowledge, Mr. Hayes?
Mr. Hayes?
Great. So I had gone through this pretty fully at the last meeting, but again, just to reiterate, school committee policy says the committee will review executive session minutes for possible declassification at least once a year. And the state law says the public body, the school committee, is also required to periodically review the executive session minutes to determine whether continued nondisclosure is warranted, and such determination must be included in the subsequent meeting minutes. So to follow our stated school committee policy, policy BEC and the open meeting law, you know, we thought it was best to create a protocol. And so what we had come up with was, after consultation with Mike Gilbert, who works for the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, was to create an executive session minute subcommittee, and that would meet once or twice a year to review executive session minutes and to determine whether or not they could be released to the public.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or discussion? I think that we don't often have executive sessions when we're not in negotiations, and if people agree, for now, maybe we could say once a year, but we should do it perhaps when January or February comes around for this, because we're going to go back to 2009. So as part of the protocol, we're going to start in 2009. And then leave it up to the persons who would be in charge to decide whether they need one meeting or two meetings. How does that, does that sound? Okay. So I'm going to do two things. First, take a motion to approve the establishment of the School Committee Executive Session Minute Subcommittee.
It's a mouthful.
Yes. Would someone like?
I'll move to approve the establishment of the School Committee Executive Session Minute Subcommittee.
And do we have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Carol. Okay. So all those in favor? Oh, sorry. Discussion, discussion. Mr. Marchese?
No, Mrs. Kane, you said we're going to start with 2009 and then move forward. At some point, will we go even further back to open those up, or?
No. At this point, we're not. We could wait and see if, nobody's, basically, I'm the only one left on the school committee out of all of us, and so it's, the responsibility would have been with those, the previous school committees. So if we find that we need to do that, we can do that. But most of those, I would venture to say, were negotiations that are not going to be released. But if it becomes an issue, we definitely could go back. Yeah. But right now, we're planning to start with 2009.
No, my point, because so much time has passed, you know, that there may be moot, you know what I mean?
Exactly.
So just, what's the point? You know, if you open it up to the public, it's not going to hurt anybody. That's all I'm saying, is that, because they're so old, that's all.
Yeah. Mrs. Benton?
I would say that the executive session minutes that have to do with negotiations are probably as timely today as they were 30 years ago. And I would not recommend releasing them.
Right.
The minutes of those negotiations.
Right. And those are the ones they tell you not to release, that you don't release them. So, and I think you'd be surprised at how few, when we've really come down to it, I really think there's going to be, that we've had less executive sessions than you would expect.
I think it's four.
And there's four at this point.
Four, I think.
There's only four since 2009. So it's not like we have a lot of executive sessions that we have not released.
But it's good for the public to know that.
Yeah.
Yes, definitely.
Release the executive session minutes, you know, we're not quote-unquote hiding anything, and of course, we're not, so.
Isn't it just that?
Mr. Ville.
That we would just redact, if there are portions of executive session minutes that are still potentially sensitive or subject to nondisclosure under the, under the public records law, we would just redact that portion and release the rest of it?
The reason we decided to do this, Mr. Ville, is because that's what the recommendation is of the Massachusetts School Committee, is that if you haven't, if it hasn't happened before, you basically, for now, start with one of the oldest people, which would be me, 2009. And I'm old, no matter how I look at it. And you go from there, and if something should come up, or if we have the time and we, and the committee chooses to go back through it and do that, that's fine, too. That's not, that's not a problem. But for tonight, I think what we're saying is we're going to, that's our starting place, 2009. This committee will go through that, and then after they've done that, then, when they come to visit with us to make a report about this, then if we want them to go back to 2008 now and see what's happening to that, I mean, where do you stop or start? That's part of the problem, because other committees didn't do it. It's, the law keeps changing. So now, it's our, we have to do that for us, so that's what we'll take care of instead of taking care of all the people that didn't do it. Because at the time, that wasn't the law that they had to do it the same way. You know? And we don't know that they didn't look at them and decide that they didn't need to be released, they couldn't be released. It's part of the history, so, and we wouldn't know that. No. So if it's all right with everybody for now, that's what we'll do, is start with 2009.
And I will say, just to clarify, thank you. The subcommittee will make a recommendation, but it ultimately is, they're going to be the school committee who votes on it in full. So ultimately, you know, we all will have a say as to what is released and what isn't released.
Right. Exactly. Right. So all those in favor of starting in 2009 and having the subcommittee? Unanimous, I think. Now, I need to appoint a subcommittee. And so I'm thinking, Dr. Quick has gone away.
She's hiding her behind.
She hid under her packet. I love it. No, actually, I thought Mr. Hayes is very much into this, and so, and we have him enervated from the conference, so I'd like to appoint Mr. Hayes and Mrs. Benton, because there's so few. We don't need a second person to do them. And they'll decide which ones they should bring before us, if that's all right.
Verbal community of what?
Are you sure about that?
What, do you want to do it?
No, no, I'm just kidding.
I'd prefer to add you. No.
I'm just kidding.
All right. So it'll be Mr. Hayes, and that'll be good. All right. Excellent. Number seven. Item number seven, new business. What happened?
I'm sorry. I'm looking at the wrong agenda. I have an older version.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Our new business is a draft of an anti-bullying plan.
As you all know, the law was passed last spring under the Massachusetts General Law Section 71, 370. We now must put together an anti-bullying prevention plan to go along with the policy that you developed earlier this year. Principal McMiniman has been chairing a committee consisting of teachers, parents, school committee members, and nurses, a nurse, yeah, nurse intern, guidance counselor, head of cares. And we have brought before you a draft plan, which is the law requires that we seek public input. This is up on our website with a note encouraging members of the community to give us feedback on the plan. It will come back on the 4th for approval. Just want to call your attention to the back, pages 18, 19, 20, incident reports. Now, anytime that there is an alleged incident, the principal or his or her designee must fill out an incident report on the accused, on the victim, and on the perpetrator. And these forms will stay with the grade level so that they're passed from school to school so that, because, as you know, the law states that bullying is repeated acts, not singletons. And with all the transitions that our students have, we need to make sure that the history goes with them as they move from kindergarten to the first through three buildings, fourth and fifth. Parents are immediately notified of any incidents, and there's a nice, on page 20, sort of flowchart of how it's due to be completed.
I think the thing on the page 20 flowchart that was really impressive to me is the fact that was there aggression, and it gives you ideas, and then it says, no, that's not bullying, consider another infraction. Because what I have been afraid of is that every little minor incident is labeled bullying when in fact, it's not. Kids can be kids, and, you know, push each other around and stuff, get a little overexcited, et cetera, and it's not a bullying activity. So this sheet recognizes the fact that the incident has to be really well-negotiated, well-looked at, so that people know that everything is not bullying. And hopefully, the pendulum is not going to swing to the effect that every incident that we have is a bullying incident when it's really not. But this paper is outstanding. And the no bully zone at the end, that, that's going to be attached right to the policy, that's fantastic. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Mr. Ville?
And I think it's in line with what you were just saying, and I was wondering whether, even just anecdotally at this point, we were getting any reports back from teachers or others in the administration as to the, whether the paperwork involved is burdensome, how many reports there are, and what we're starting to see with respect to implementation of the legislation and our policies.
Mr. Hayes?
So I attended the November 1st bullying committee meeting, and I asked a similar question. I, essentially, I had asked how many reported bullying incidents had occurred since the beginning of the school year. And as of, and, you know, I think they might have said, don't quote me, but I'm going to quote them. As of November 1st, there had only been one reported incident at the high school, and about 12 reported incidents of bullying in the middle school. Just as an FYI. I don't know how to weigh that, is, you know, but.
I know.
Those are the numbers. Those are the raw numbers.
I'll get you, I'll get you the data.
Give me the data. I'm just wondering whether it becomes even more prevalent. I think where it gets really gray is with even younger kids, right? Where having, having a few of them, or with all the friends and everything else, I mean, there's constant complaints about bullying and maltreatment and all kinds of things. And I don't know if those are triggering the paperwork, if they're not. What's going on, you know, at the first grade, second grade, third grade levels, trying to apply this in really, really tricky situations with kids that are, you know, very immature at this point?
Mr. Marchese, and then Dr. Quick.
I know, I know this hasn't been in place yet, because it's only a draft, but I'd be curious to see, though, in terms of the numbers that Mr. Hayes just presented, one at the high school and twelve at the middle school. I'm just curious to see what has happened and what the fall through in those cases have been so far, you know?
The incident reporting has been in place since the very first day of school, so I can actually bring you back the numbers at the next meeting. Okay?
Okay. Thank you. Oh, Dr. Quick.
Has this flowchart also been since the beginning? Okay. Just to answer what Mr. Ville was saying, I think that even at the, I mean, I think that, what I like so much about this flowchart is the fact that it can be easily used at any grade level. I mean, even the children that, you know, may not understand what bullying is, and, you know, like I said, same thing. It's, you know, my daughter one day will say, you know, this girl did this, and then the next day, she's her best friend. So, you know, I mean, that's something that you're dealing with at that, that, those young ages. But the nice thing is, is that you can at least ask these children these questions and get out of them, okay, yes, this is, this is a real bullying situation, or it's not. So I really like, the flowchart, I think, is going to be very, is very helpful.
Really? Yes. Absolutely. Mrs. Carol?
Who initially puts into the incident report form? Does the principals, does, okay, so what if he says, I don't feel like it's an incident, but the parents are like, no, this was an incident? Can they put it in? Can they force him to do that, or what kind of action?
Anybody, anyone can fill out a, I mean, can make a request of a, of a report, yes.
There might be differences. Okay. That's a good question. Mr. Hayes?
Couple of questions and comments. First question, I had mentioned via email. You'd mentioned that the incident report is required, but then on the bottom of page 10, it says, use of the Wilmington Bullying Prevention and Intervention Incident Reporting Form Report is not required. So was that a mistake, or am I misreading it, or?
It is not, that sort of goes through Kathleen's question. A parent or another student or someone anonymous can make a call or send an email, and that we have to respond to as a report of an incident. So that's why that says.
Gotcha. Okay. Regarding, you mentioned anonymous reports, and I'm wondering, you know, how are we going to balance that between, you know, and I think, I think the report does a pretty good job. It says, you know, we'll accept anonymous reports, but we're not going to make, we're not going to dole out punishment solely based on that anonymous report. So that's, that's something I think we need to be aware of, and that's, that's a tricky, tricky one.
It sure is, and we haven't decided if, how much we're going to encourage anonymous reports. There's been some suggestions from some of the teachers, which is great, is, you know, boxes around school for, that people can put anonymous reports in. You've seen a gazillion companies that have sprung up since this law was passed with software to do just that. I am not sure that that's the best way of encouraging reporting. We do have, I just found out, we have the capabilities with our ESPED program to have anonymous reporting done, so we're going to be looking into that.
Okay. Good to know.
And I think the committee's got to make that decision.
Yeah. I just wanted to comment on the committee. I attended just one of the meetings so far, but just wanted to say it was, it was a great meeting, a great group of people. I thought Principal McMiniman did a good job of running the meetings and chairing the committee. And just looking forward to continuing my work on that committee. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any more? Mr. Marchese?
In terms of, Mr. Hayes, in terms of reporting, I think the most thing, what we need to reinforce is let the kids know, it's, you know, not to be afraid to come forward if something happened. I think the administration, the teachers have done a good job, so fathership, let the kids know that, not to be afraid to come forward and talk to each other, talk to the principal, let them know what's going on. And that's the biggest piece of communication. So as long as we keep that chain, line of communication open between administrators, the teachers, and the kids, I think everything will fall into place. So, knock on wood.
And just, could you comment briefly, could you comment briefly on the Awareness Week that's going to be happening for bullying? That sounded like a wonderful idea.
We are planning a whole week of activities for the community in January in order to have everyone sort of on the same page the week of January 24th. We're actually going to have Marion Ryan, who is the general counsel to the Middlesex DSA Office, who did training for us. Some of you were there at the opening day meeting and was, received rave reviews. We'll be doing a parent evening on Monday, January 24th, and we will be doing activities in the schools all week and hope to get the community involved. As I, every time this topic comes up, I always say, it's not a school issue, this is a community issue, and we need everybody to work together, and we will be having, inviting people in the community, along with all of our students and parents, to take an anti-bullying pledge. And, and we have already set up some enrichment programs at each of the levels, so you'll be hearing more about it.
Mrs. Carol?
No, I think she's. Dr. Quick? Maybe I'm missing it in the policies and everything that we've read in the past. When somebody, whether it's anonymous or not, fills out one of these reports, is it then, you know, if you, let's say, student A bullies student B, and student C sees this occur, okay? We don't, and student C decides to fill out the report, let's say, does the student who's being accused get to see, is this why the anon, the anonymity, I can't say the word, is this why these children, these people might not want to put their names in?
I don't know. I don't know why. I guess it's fear of retribution.
Right. So does the person who's being accused get to see this report, or know who's putting in the report?
No. Reports are not shared.
Okay.
Information is shared. And, I mean, the person who's being accused absolutely has to know, you know, that they're being accused by.
By so-and-so?
Well, I'm not sure.
That's why I'm asking.
I mean, it would depend on the investigation. I don't think we could make a blanket statement on that.
Okay.
Unfortunately, because of retribution, lots of students don't want to tell information because they don't want to be then singled out, so I'm not sure. I mean, at the, at the lower grade levels, absolutely, because that's the only way you can, I mean, you could, developmentally, a five-year-old, the more specific you can be and concrete, the better you are at getting full information, so. But we'll bring that, we'll ask the committee.
Good question.
Meeting on Monday, so.
Mr. Ville, do we all set?
I'm all set.
Okay. Thank you. So this.
That's okay. I was just going to say, I think that's a big idea, having the parents, parents meeting. I hope parents do come out and listen to her talk, because I was there through the whole time, and as a parent, I really think it would benefit them, because some parents don't realize what's going on. And I think, you know, that meeting will tell them, this is how it's going to happen, this is how it could happen, you know?
I agree with you, because she did give us some concrete examples of things, and she talked as a parent, not as a general counsel.
And I felt like as a person, who I was there as, I, you know, as, as a parent, I felt good about it, so I hope other parents come out.
Thank you.
Yeah, definitely.
Very nice. Mr. Hayes?
Just to answer Dr. Quick's, not necessarily answer it, but address it. On the bottom of page 11, it says, the confidentiality of students and witnesses reporting alleged acts of bullying will be maintained to the extent possible, given the school's obligation to investigate the matter.
Thank you. Mr. Marchese?
I think that the timing of this draft is, is kind of coincidental, because today there was an article in the paper that only three schools out of 391 in the whole Commonwealth have actually come forward with a, with a plan to the state. So it was very alarming, none of the only three have actually completed something. So I know there's, there's a certain timeline that the state has set, so what, do you know?
September 31st.
September 31st, okay.
That's why we want to have you voted on the 4th.
On the 4th. So we'll do a first reading at our next meeting?
No, our next meeting is the 4th.
No, this isn't a reading. I mean, this is a, you only have to do two, I mean, this isn't a policy. Policy, you do three readings.
Okay.
You've already, we've already voted the policy.
Okay. Okay. So on this here, so we don't have to do two readings on this, we can just, on the next one shows up, and we're done.
That's the next one.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're going to meet that timeline, so.
Let's turn it to a financial question, but, you know, this is sort of, I guess, considered one of those unfunded mandates, and it's a good unfunded mandate, I guess, in a sense, if there can be such. But the federal, the state government who's requiring this, they aren't giving us any extra funds for, you know, the staff training, as an example. Is that, is that?
That's correct. Add it to your list. I know it. Oh, Mr. Vale?
Well, maybe I'll mention it. To the extent that I think we have policies in place that will allow us to go after students or their families for costs associated with bomb threats or other kinds of things that shut down the school, not that I think we've ever gone after them, but I think if, you know, I think we would have authority to recoup costs associated with administration of the program from the perpetrators.
Yep, thank you.
And we did, I just wanna, on the, one last year that we did identify, we did get some payment for some of the process of it.
Over time and police response and everything? Good, those we have, so.
Great. Right, thank you. Delegations. Okay. Board members' questions and comments. Kathleen this time.
Oh, I have nothing to say tonight.
Okay.
Have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Mr. Hayes?
Nothing tonight.
Whoa, okay. Mr. Marchese?
No, I'm sorry, I was just looking at my packet, something else, but I apologize. No, it's, uh, nothing major right now. I, I feel for the Wilmington varsity football team, and they've had two hard losses, and, and I know tomorrow night, excuse me, Friday night's gonna be a big game for them. So please come out and support the varsity football. They've had a great year this year. Things were off to a great start, and, you know, I just hope, we just keep on this track and, and, you know, into the seniors. Now the time's ticking, and, and I'm gonna start nagging on you guys every single month, so enjoy the time you have and enjoy the rest of the year. So thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Quick?
I just want to thank all the staff, the students who came out in full for the Wilmington Education Second Annual Walk, Walk the West. We, as of right now, have made over $20,000. And, you know, I wanna make sure everybody knows, no donation was too small. We appreciated every penny that we've received. Half of that money that each school raised gets half of that, 50% goes to the education foundation for school endeavors, and the other 50% goes directly back to the school for whatever they possibly need during that school year. So it's, it was a wonderful event, and I just wanna thank everybody for helping out. Thank you.
Mr. Vale?
Yeah, thank you very much. I don't have much to add, other than I wanna thank Superintendent Benton for including in our packets this article on, which was timely, relating to my comments on school year and continuous improvement and a bunch of other things. And so I found it to be informative with respect to some school districts and their attempts to implement a more year-round schedule and to add more school days, especially as we begin to think ahead and formulate our plans for the future with respect to strategic planning and everything else. And as far as that goes, on the radio today, I was actually listening, and they're talking about how Massachusetts is, is first in the country with respect to math scores, where something like 12% of our students are proficient in math as compared to 6% or 8%, I think, for the rest of the country. But then they pointed out that internationally, that if you look at places like Finland or Singapore or others, something like 25% to 30% of their students score proficient on comparable math tests. So the point I've been trying to make is that it's a global world, and there's global competition, and we're in no position to rest on our laurels. In fact, there's a lot of work to do, and this is what we need to continue to emphasize as we think ahead about what's an appropriate program, what's appropriate facilities, what are we, what are we trying to accomplish, not only today, but five, 10, 20 years, 30 years out.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, I have a couple of things. Mr. Marchese, can I have these over here?
Yes, too.
Yep, thank you. Oh, there's more. This is what happens when I go to a conference. Thank you. Okay. These are just a couple of things. Oh, this goes to Robert and Kathleen. Okay. One of the things is current, this is the Shawshin Elementary School Night at the Wilmington Memorial Library. I was asked to mention that this is going to be occurring in the hopes that this is a model for some of the other schools, but the interaction between the lib, the local library and our school system is alive and well and doing well. The people involved in this are very excited. Joanne, Joanne Miles from the Shawshin School has started working on this, and hopefully on Wednesday, December 1st, from 6:00 to 7:30, the Shawshin Elementary School students and their parents will have a great night at the Wilmington Memorial Library. And what this all stemmed from originally was her discovering that not as many students as she would have liked have library cards, or if they have them, actually use the library. So they're hoping to build enthusiasm from the elementary schools for using the library. So that's very exciting.
And all students who attend, shameless plug, but it's nonprofit, so I can do it, will, will be receiving a buy-one-get-one free coupon to the bookstore next door located at 183 Middlesex Avenue. Hundred percent of the proceeds benefit the Wilmington Memorial Library.
Thank you, Mr. Co-Manager. That's very nice. Thank you. Another thing I've given you is, this was one of the presentations at, I'm kinda blending in, because the report on, this will segue into Robert doing his report, to the open meeting law. This was one of the best things that I saw, this, the way that they've presented this, and it gives us a snapshot of complaint process, the public body except purposes for executive session, meetings, overviews. So this is for you all to have in your, in your packets. Then they also had what a school committee needs to know about special education, parent advisory councils. And actually, one of the things that was so good about this conference for me was the fact that it reinforced that we are doing a lot right as a school committee. We have really been following the processes we should be following. And we've already assigned or appointed, or she's volunteered, Mrs. Carroll, to be our member that we need. They come once, once a year. They should be coming to our meeting, which we already had that happen this summer. And that doesn't mean they can't come any other time. We'd be, love to have them any other time. But for this, we wanna be supportive of our special education pack, and we want them to know that, that we are. So this gives you how the packs can help the school committee, how the school committee can help the pack. And I think we're really on a good roll here. And if you see anything, Mrs. Carroll, from this, that you could explain. And then I just wanted to mention, when we do other reports on number 10, that's where, if you've attended a meeting, that's where we'd have you give the report of what happened at the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know that. All right.
So, starting now, if you, if you get to go to a meeting, just let me know that you have another report for it.
Okay.
So that would be perfect. And, let me see, oh, and one thing that we're going to, that I found out too. I know that for our packets, and this is exactly what we're supposed to be doing, if we need clarification on a packet so that we don't take up time at the meetings, we send an email or a phone call to Mrs. Benton or Mr. Ruggiero. But what we haven't been doing, and what we're going to institute now, is the answer goes back to everybody. So what one person knows, everybody knows, and that's what we're supposed to be doing. And the idea is, when you get the answer, it's informational answer, we don't start discussing it. We don't send back, "Oh, I don't think, I like that idea," or, "Or maybe it should be this or that," because the questions are basically clarification questions. And so it's then, they shouldn't be comments, they shouldn't be, "I look at this report and I'm thinking A, B, and C," because we leave that for our open meetings. We, we don't wanna violate the open meeting law at all. But if we have a question on how this works, or how much money this would cost, or anything that's informational, then I've asked the superintendent, Mr. Ruggiero, to send back the reply to everybody. Dr. Quick?
So, but when we send the question, we don't need to CC everybody, just that person, and that, and then they add everybody in on the way out?
And then they'll send it back to us. Yep. Yep, that'll be good. So know that when you ask a question, please do not, if we start to discuss it, then you're violating the open meeting law. So please don't add the discussion to it, just, you know, if you find that the clarification question didn't satisfy you, or you, you still didn't understand it, you can certainly send back and say, "Could you clarify this further for me? Because I don't understand this part of it." But not, we're not gonna get into any discussion about how we, oh, think of these, you're supposed to think, "I think, I feel, I wonder." You don't ask those questions. That's not the type of question we should be asking the superintendent and the business manager about the packet. Okay, so that will be a new thing that we'll be instituting. And, let me see. Oh, this is my last, I love this. I was so excited for you, Mr. Vale, when I found this. I was so excited. Nancy Walser from Harvard wrote this book, The Essential School Board Book. She was a school board member in Cambridge for eight years, and she was very interested in how school boards operate, and what is the best way for them to be effective. And she chose a number of school boards towards the, it's only 97 pages long. On page, we're all gonna help you though, Mr. Vale. I, I got this great idea. I'm becoming an English teacher again for a little while here. On page 123, it tells you where Boston is one of the school committees, the school boards that she used, but all over the United States. She looked at boards that were considered effective, and she went through and wrote this book about what makes them effective. And so what I was thinking would work for us, there are six chapters and an introduction. And so what I'm gonna ask you to do is, before December 4th, I'm gonna have you just, like, glance through the book, look through the book and see, if you get the chance and you're fascinated and you start reading, that would be great, too. But one of the things I learned at this conference was that school committees should be having professional development as well as everyone else in the school system. And so this was the first book that they recommended to be used by a school committee. So I was thinking, if then, on December 4th, we could each choose a chapter that we would have a discussion, and we put it on the agenda for the next six months, so that we'd have a little discussion. And I was thinking in terms of two things that you found in the chapter that were really important or impressive, or really you want to consider, and you would talk about those, and then we would each add one more item out of there that we thought, it could be the same one, it might turn out to be the same, that we picked out the same one, and that would be really excellent. But not a lot of pressure or anything, just what really stood out in this chapter, and how does it make us more effective? How does it help our role as school committee members? So I think once you start looking at it, you'll see that it's got some fascinating information in here. It can help us. So hopefully on December 4th, I won't have to assign chapters.
I think the English teacher in your is coming.
It totally is. I'm so excited to do this. And they told me at the Mass Association of School Committees, this is a perfect thing to do for, for school committee. They're encouraging school committees to start doing this, to, to do some reading. And Mr. Hayes did ask us, I'll put it right back on you, Mr. Hayes, he said he'd love to have some books that we could be reading.
That's true.
So I figure three of us will be happy at least. So we'll see.
Places aren't to me, actually.
Yeah, thank you. And the last thing is, which will segue into Robert, next year, what we have to do, poor Robert had a little bit of a frustration. We had not said, after we took our votes on the different resolutions, we had not said, "But Robert, if there's a discussion and the discussion changes your mind, because it's got some really good facts and ideas that make you look at the resolution a different way, you can change the vote." And I told him that you really can't change the vote, because we didn't do that. It's a little frustrating at times for Mr. Hayes to have to vote what we voted when they had this long discussion, and it seemed like we were probably on the wrong side of the issue. So next year, I'm gonna ask that after we go through the resolutions, we give that, that opportunity to the person who does it to be able to change the vote. Okay. So Robert, I'll segue right into you, and if you wanna add a few comments about the conference?
Sure. A few comments. I, absolute, brevity, very important. I've learned that now.
Yes, thank you.
So, but regarding the resolutions, six of the seven resolutions passed. The ones that passed were all by votes, vote, voice vote, near unanimous. We had abstained on several of those. The one that didn't pass was one that we had voted in favor of. It was the one regarding teachers retiring during the, you know, during the school year, and, you know, what would that do to their pension. So that ended up losing by about 20 votes or so. So we were, we were in the, the losing side on that particular one. I will tell you, I did not enjoy my time as a delegate. The meeting lasted roughly three hours. It really dissolved towards the end, where we were debating terminology to the extent of, you know, will or may. It got, it broke down pretty, pretty quickly there. So next year, when I do go to the conference, and I do hope to go next year, someone else will have to be the delegate. So, anyway, so I, I, my time there...
But you had a good supper afterwards.
That's true. And I got to, I got to sit next to the gentleman who was ambushed by Bill O'Reilly's producer, the, the chairman of the Chumford School Committee regarding last year's controversial no Christmas gifts in the school shop. So I got some, it wasn't, he was an interesting gentleman, and, but anyway, I met a lot of nice people, that's for sure. So regarding the five, the five panel sessions that I went to, I'm only gonna talk about three of them, and real briefly. I, I attended one called School Finance, and it spoke specifically of a Chapter 70, and it explained how Chapter 70 worked, and, you know, the basic formula, the foundation budget, the local contribution, then the state Chapter 78, and then whatever we decide to add on top of that. So the, the, the basics are pretty understandable. But the actual formula, very complicated, extremely complicated, and really in need of reform. The, the basic formula really hasn't changed since 1991. And the, the example, the speaker used was, you know, so they're assuming that healthcare costs, as an example, are the same now as they were in 1991. So that's just one example of how the, the formula is pretty much broken. And I thought there was basically near unanimy, unanimy, it was almost anonymous.
Me neither.
Almost anonymous.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. In the room, that all the school, all the school districts felt they weren't getting their fair share of Chapter 78. So that was very interesting, and I will have handouts for everyone by the next meeting. I also attended panel discussions regarding school law, school law 101, school law 201. And something very interesting that we hadn't discussed was, was a, was a new law enacted back in August, August 19th, 2010, regarding the sports-related head injury and concussion law. And just real briefly, the law requires that public schools, and in addition, any other schools subject to the MIAA rules, make sure that student athletes and their parents, coaches, athletic directors, school nurses and physicians, and others learn about the consequences of head injuries and written materials. The law requires that athletes and their parents inform their coaches about prior head injuries at the beginning of the season. If a student athlete becomes unconscious or suffers a known or suspected concussion during a game or practice, the law mandates removing the student from play or practice, and requires written certification from a licensed medical professional for return to play. The law also prohibits coaches, trainers, and others from encouraging or permitting a student athlete to use sports equipment as a weapon, or to engage in sports techniques that are unreasonable, unreasonably endanger the health and safety of himself, herself, or other players, such as helmet-to-helmet hits, which we're actually being discussed in the NFL now. But, you know, I thought a lot of that was common sense, but now it's, it's in the law, and, you know, we can be held liable, I, I guess, if, if we don't, you know, fulfill this law. Unfortunately, the, the law was passed August 19th, so it gave the school districts very little time to put things in place. So that was unfortunate. But again, I think it's a good thing. And finally, and I attended a workshop on transportation savings for special education students and regular transportation. And I won't go into it too much, but it talked about forming a collaborative with nearby towns. So for instance, Arlington, Burlington, Lexington, Waltham, Watertown, and Belmont all joined a collaborative to save money in terms of special, special ed transportation costs. And it was, they received, 90% of the parents rated their, this year's transportation for their child as good or excellent. And in terms of cost savings, FY10, Lexington reported spending $400,000 less in special education transportation than was in their FY10 budget. FY10 budget. Arlington noted that they saved an estimated $67,000, and Watertown said they saved $90,000, and I could go on and on and on. So clearly, this is another document that I will have photocopies for everyone to look at, including Paul. And, and this would raise the question, not just in transportation, but just in general, what are some of the collaboratives that we're currently doing to help save the district money? So that may be for a future agenda item, or just sort of an FYI little report, would be something I would be interested in seeing. But I literally have a bag full of documents and handouts and notes, and I will transcribe them all and put them together and present some sort of folder for you all at the, at the next school committee meeting.
Robert, if you need Xerox, you can bring it to the Roman House, and they'll do it for you.
Okay, that's good to know.
You don't have to do all that.
All right, appreciate that. But, and just to sum it up, I really enjoyed my time. I feel like I learned a lot. I'm still not fully recovered, it was just a few days ago, you know, so, you know, I haven't even...
But he's not telling you, as he presented at a conference himself the next morning, Saturday morning, for librarians.
I had to cut my stay at this conference short, because I had another library conference in Worcester, so. I had a busy weekend, and I wasn't really able, able to get everyone's folders ready, but you'll have, you'll have folders at the next meeting. And I learned quite a bit, I'm thankful for going, and I will say, just to suck up to the chair a little bit, I, I think about, at least half the people in the place knew who Peggy was, and they were all coming up and shaking her hand, and I was, it was a privilege, Peggy, to be with you.
Oh, thank you, Robert. Thank you. I really enjoy, it really is enervating if anyone ever gets to go at any time, it really is excellent. People talking about ideas in education and focusing on it, even at supper, and even at, you know, in between downtimes, it's really interesting.
We sat with a couple of gentlemen who were on school committees for how long, Peggy?
Forty years.
Forty years. They were, they were getting lifetime achievement awards or something along those lines.
They were there for 40 years.
Unbelievable.
It was incredible.
Wonderful.
Okay, so other reports, in the future, other reports will be like CPAC and the bullying committee, and if we, if we're WEF and everything, we'll put them down there. Correspondence, Dr. Quick?
On this evening.
And you'll be interested to know that there is nothing in the law that explains what is the duty of a secretary of a school committee.
So I can dance on the table and nobody can...
So you're pretty wide open there for what you can do.
Joking.
They kept, they brought that up a couple of times, which was really interesting.
It is interesting.
Yeah, it was really interesting. Future meeting dates and agenda items, December 4th, we'll have a brief meeting, if anything comes up between now and September, December 4th, because we open up with a regular meeting here, it's right here, and then we'll go into the budget presentation. Okay? So if you have anything that you need to put in the agenda, let us know. And then we won't be meeting, that will be our last meeting in December, it'll be our only meeting in December. And then we'll meet again January, what, say 10th?
I think it's the 10th.
It's around January 10th.
Can I ask a question, I'm sorry, regarding the next meeting? Superintendent Benton, do we need to bring anything to this particular budget meeting? Are you going to provide us with...
We will receive a draft budget before the meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, okay. And we're going to adjourn into executive session from which we will not return. Okay? So I take a motion to adjourn to executive session from which we will not return.
Motion to adjourn to executive session from which we will not return.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Mackenzie. Okay, Mrs. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Mackenzie?
Yes.
Dr. Quick?
Yes.
Mr. Veale?
Aye.
And the chair says yes, so.